Mike.
Hi.
Mitzi.
Here.
Randy.
Here.
Tommy.
Right here.
Here, sorry.
Sir, office.
Yes.
There we go.
Here.
So, why you're, why you're an eight year old, walk down the streets.
You've received the minutes from last month. Any questions or comments or corrections? If not, only a motion to approve the minutes. Got a motion made to approve minutes, drop a second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Okay, all business from previous minute meetings. Joe Michael, you're first up.
This picture of our lovely community center kitchen. Last month I let you know that we are no longer in health department code. The proposal that I have for making, making the changes is that the, um, from the dishwasher to the corner of the refrigerator, that section of cabinetry needs to be gently removed, put in the new three base sink, put in the hand washing sink and reconfigure the cabinetry. I have people, I, I, I've got to submit a, uh, floor plan to the, to the, uh, health department before I can move forward at all. But then this showed and said you all wanted to give images of what I was talking about. And this is what I was talking about as far as the information we need to make to the kitchens. So, um, so yeah, where the sink is to that first row of, of drawers is a three base sink and then over by the refrigerator is where the hand washing sink will need to be. But I just need a yea or nay or yes, continue or not because I need to fill out paperwork for the health department.
That'll all be open under there, under the sink, right?
And currently what is stored in all those doors is a lot of stuff that, like a lot of old service equipment that really is kind of had its use and is not really, I really wouldn't want my potato salad given some of the stuff that are in there. But, um, there's just a lot of certain like casserole serving utensils and that sort of thing. But I have, um, people ready to donate equipment and run it and time to this project so it will cost the city nothing. So, I just, that's what my presentation is. So y'all can talk about it, about yourselves, think about it, let me know what's going on.
So just question, question for clarification.
Okay.
The sink that we're talking about is a three base sink.
Three base sink.
That's going to come out of right there.
Yes.
It's gonna go in there.
Yes.
And then you need a separate hand washing sink.
That will be over by the refrigerator.
Over, on the right of the refrigerator?
On the, to the right of the refrigerator.
Right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
So basically the whole counter is gonna be?
The, the counter will be removed, but we can reconfigure the, the, once we get the two sinks in, we can reconfigure the corner for where we, for foot wrap and that sort of thing.
As far as plumbing for the hand washing, how will that work?
Well, um, there, for one thing, there would be probably a, have to run a PVC. I don't know, I really haven't looked at all the plumbing under there.
Okay.
So we'll probably have to run a line.
Okay.
To there. So, um, but like I said, I've got, um, equipment lined up and I've got people willing to donate to the situation. I don't want to deal with any money. We will figure out that when it comes to, but we, I need a yea or nay to pursue it further before I fill out all the paperwork for the health department.
Okay.
So, so do you all want to talk about it tonight?
Okay.
Okay.
Is, you're talking about removing cabinetry. And I understand you like to move the countertop. To get the sink, the sink in, which is probably gonna come down to the top of these drawers. About that is I would say. Okay, and then you basically have to remove this to cut a hole in. And.
Well, actually now we have, we, we just have to remove this section to put in the whole unit for the sink.
There's a whole unit for that?
For the, for the.
For the hand washing sink. Okay. Okay. Motion to, uh, motion to grant permission.
A motion made to grant permission for Joe Michael to proceed with.
I will keep you all informed every single step of the way once I'm, once I've put it through.
Is there a timeline? I'm sorry. Got a motion on the table.
I'm sorry.
Suspend motion. Go ahead.
Um, the, um, the, the timeline, I really don't have it set forth a timeline for yet. I mean, as soon as I get a yea or nay, I'll start filling out the paperwork and I'm sure. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
So if, when you say you're moving forward, you're gonna ask them if this will work?
What I have to do is we have to submit a floor plan of what our, our, um, this is what the, the inspectors have showed us. That we have to give a floor plan of what our intentions are for them to okay that before we do anything.
So I have another question about training. There's another permit you have to have for food safety.
Yes. Yes, it's, it's the, the training and, and I believe that, uh, the person, one of the reasons why, why I'm pursuing this is because Terry Watts wasn't wanting to, brought up she would like to do a soup kitchen once in a week. I believe she has the, has training for food safety, but I mean, I can look in further into that. But as far as, um, that, that would be someone to oversee the whole project. And, but I'm not sure what the rules are for, because really I wanted to be having, be ready for in case of an emergency that we will be up to code. Right, is really what the goal is.
Thank you.
No, I'm just trying to make sure that like the going forward is just getting approval for what the plans are put in.
Oh yeah, just getting approval of, of, once I, once I fill out the paperwork to the, uh, health department and get back word from them, then I'll bring it to y'all as soon as they have to say.
Okay. Reinstate motion please. Got a motion made to, for Joe Michael to be able to move forward with plans to submit to the health department. Do I have a second? All those in favor? Thank you. Congratulations. Before we move on, I just want to give Richard an opportunity to address for the fire department. So you don't have to stick around the whole thing if you don't want. But if you do, you're welcome to.
This is kind of like, I don't really think since for various reasons, I didn't get the update yet. So far this year, we've had forty-four calls. We've put in approximately three hundred and eight hours. Part of that is calls, part of it's maintenance, part of it's going to training, meetings, whatever the case may be. So far this year, Survival Flight has given us stop the bleed and CPR training, traction and splints, oxygen therapy and landing zones. Every second Tuesday of the month, they give us, uh, other, other class, which is keeping us refreshed on all the things that we have going on. Today, both of the, the American Eagle and the Pierce were pump tested. They both passed, so you have two really good pumper fire trucks in case there's a house fire. And that's about all I have, thank you.
Thank you. And you got a new volunteer fireman, right?
Oh, we, we got a new person yesterday, came to the meeting and, uh, the meeting before, we had two people, but they didn't show up this last time because Eric's scared of him. But yeah, we did. And the guy that came yesterday, um, who was his first name?
Jake.
Jacob, Jacob Lewis, um, he's eighteen years old.
Just turned eighteen.
Exactly what we need, a go getter, somebody who wants to learn, so.
And for anybody that doesn't know, Jacob, Jacob Lewis's dad was a, a EMT for us and he lost his, he passed away a long time, a few years ago and at a very young age. So we're, he, Jacob has been chomping at the bit to come. He waited till he was eighteen and, I mean, just as quick as, so. We're glad to have him. Thank you. Alright, so we're gonna move on. Oh, let me, if anybody wanted to sign up for the public comment section, the signups outside, or not outside, it's on Mr. Davis's desk.
How, how are you doing, volunteer, how many other? You've got one man new, how many more do you need?
We could use as many as show up.
Well, I'm just wondering if it would be beneficial to the city for us to, I don't, I don't even know what to do anymore because I don't know if anybody reads the paper.
I took an ad.
Did, do I, and we have it on the Facebook page. Um, the, the thing is that, that, uh, two of our guys are dual, they're Oxley and Leslie, so if they have something going on in Oxley, they aren't gonna show up here.
Right.
Several other people have jobs, you know, so they're gone during the day. That leaves just one or two people during the day especially, but yeah, we can use as many people. The thing is, you don't have to show up for everything. You show up for one, one thing, that's, everything's a benefit, that's what I'm, I'm saying. Even if a person can only drive a truck, you know, or sweep the floor, it doesn't matter, everything else. Alright.
Um, moving on to the agenda, we're going to open up bids. I received three sealed bids. One other gentleman came in to talk and he never brought a bid by, so. Do you want to handle these, Mr. Davis?
First one is from, uh, Roll Lawn Care.
I must get that was Derek.
It is indeed Derek Horton. Base bid, the bidder proposes to furnish all labor, material, equipment and services required to perform the work described in the specification to include services for at least one year period. And then he has mowing, weed eating, trash pickup and parking lot blow off degree with air mow. And price per cut is one thousand one hundred dollars. Okay, second one is from Alex Bailey. Description of bid is mowing and weed eating, ditches picking up trash. One thousand eight hundred dollars per cut. Alex Bailey. Third one is from Quality Lawn Care and Landscaping. Okay, I'll just read everything he's got on here. To whom it may concern, Quality Lawn Care and Landscaping is willing to maintain the ditches and roadside of Leslie Arkansas, seven two six four five, biweekly at the rate of two thousand five hundred dollars per service. This includes mowing and weed eating up to eight feet from the road. Also will include gathering trash from the roadside. And it's assigned Cecil Kelly.
Did you know you were gonna open them up in ascending order? That's just the way you cook and crumble, huh? Almost all of you have seen the bids. I'm not sure Mitzi can see them.
What I remember what you said.
Yeah, you remember what was said, so.
So Roll Lawn Care, we've used before, correct?
Um.
Yes.
And I don't think it went well.
Well, we.
Roll Lawn Care, we've used before. Derek, the first one. Derek, we used him before.
You used Derek before?
Two years ago, and he didn't do the half the stuff that he said he was gonna do.
We've used him before. I can remember if it was two or three.
Can you see them? Do you see them?
I know you should kinda have it.
Alex, you got your own equipment?
Yeah.
Not the city's?
Well.
Have I asked you a question?
Yeah, we, we.
You sure you don't bid?
Several times, he was busting streets and.
Hang on, one conversation at a time. Hang on, go ahead. I know, I was trying to get them to.
Yeah, you stated several times before, you ain't a street man.
I wouldn't put the bid in if I didn't want it.
And you definitely have your own equipment.
Yeah. In pregnant, what's that?
Uh-huh.
In pregnant, what's that?
I'm not Jackie, I just, I mean, I'll take you at your word, but.
About Mr. Horton, I was asking.
Now, Derek is mowing for the apartments. He's done a great job. He's improved over the years, he's been really good. You know, and he needs to work, so. I ain't saying vote for him, I mean, you don't want to just lay that out there, but.
Well, what was the reason why he didn't finish or what, I mean?
Because, what's it?
Well, there was one month he didn't mow at all.
And we've had several of them.
And there was, and there was, uh, several times, there was lots of streets that he was skipping. There was, um, it was just, there was just Apache blocks that I was missing.
Now, that's happened to me, you know, it's, I had it, you know, from time to time, it's, that, that is.
Well, I understand there, you know, I understand if it's raining, you can't mow.
Right, right.
And I know that the ditches are waiting for three or four days, you can't mow it, but eventually you have to come back and do it. I mean, you can't go for a month or more.
Did he ever come back and make it up or did he say?
Well, I mean, we'd only pay him for when he was working. But meantime, we had people screaming about the weeds, we're getting head high in there in front of their house and.
Kinda like right now.
Yeah, that's, it was.
It's getting pretty bad.
Well, I don't know. I'm kinda conservative, I have to save money.
So, the, 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 what the guidance was is that it's not, you're not getting paid unless you do the job.
Right.
So.
And he stayed in there, you know, this is his bid for the year.
Right.
These others are just what? Six months? I mean, he needs to mow for the.
No, it's till, what the ad, the ad specifically said, from May to November to October.
And it shouldn't be April to November at least.
Well, we're a little past April.
Yeah.
So, we've got a late start on it.
But you do need to go into November at least.
Now, is this all the streets or just certain?
I can show you, it is all the streets. Let me grab, I have a map and I'll show it, I'll pass it around.
Okay.
What I said to everybody. Take one and pass it down. This is, as, but you do know that some of these red ones have been maintained on their own, okay? For example, where John Branscombe lives, he maintains his own. And that's, it's still marked red, but that's what, if it's not done, it needs to be done. So. That's what everybody got, everybody got this map.
Everybody got one of these.
And we can pass this in the audience if they want, just take a gander and pass it around.
Is this every two weeks or every?
Every, every two weeks hasn't needed. If it's snow, snow rain.
Rain, we don't.
And it doesn't grow, there's no need to do it, so. And as you can see on there, the little blue boxes are wrote to include Ferguson Street and to the city limit sign up in, um, up on Old Sixty-six, so.
Alex, this ain't gonna overload you, is it? I mean, I'm just.
I said I went, I got down in the morning and looked for better.
I wanna hear you something, you know.
Well, he's overloaded now, don't you know?
Well, I know that, but. I don't know if Kelly, who is.
Who is it?
Cecil Kelly, I'm trying to.
His name is Trey.
Trey.
Trey, Trey, Trey. I'm, I'm just trying to.
That's who that is. But that helps.
I don't know, but it really did.
Oh, okay, I know who, okay.
If that helps.
Yeah.
That's got the same amount of knowledge for you.
You know, why don't you be fair and give us basic guidance, you know? Somebody, they support, how much has got, good lady is going right here. And that boy really needs work.
So we have the bids. We'll need to, I'll need a motion or I'll need a, something to move forward, so.
I make the motion to honor Derek.
Got a motion made to accept Derek Horton's bid.
He's a nice young man, he's got a family, eleven hundred dollars, boots are either eighteen and twenty-five.
Well, I can call these people on here and have a family and have people.
But you've got one sitting in here that makes it on three thousand dollars a year, so.
I don't want each other to make their vote work and look crazy too.
Got a motion made to accept Derek Horton's bid, do I have a second?
I second.
You can't make the motion and second your own motion. Got a motion made and seconded, seconded. All those in favor? All those in favor of accepting Derek Horton's bid of eleven hundred dollars, um, to include trash pickup and weed eating and. Let me see.
Nope, we don't manage to know we're far.
Trash pickup and blow off every month. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Any other discussion, by the way?
That's a pretty big difference, I suppose, you know? Ten thousand, seven thousand dollars difference and.
Sure, when you're something else, that extra money, yeah, something else might come up that needs a little attention.
Can the, uh, when are we in a position where we can? They're not doing the work, we just.
Yes.
The contract and pack someone else.
Yes. Where not, we'll.
Yeah, I don't know. Think it's worth a shot and then if it doesn't work out, then I'm perfectly happy to move on to the next person. It's pretty, I mean, it's a pretty big cost difference.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
Now, do you vote for the way you really believe or just because? You vote with your opinion.
I want to. Now, do you vote?
This is exactly the way I feel.
You voted not here, you vote, you gonna vote here.
I feel right, I, I vote for. I feel right, I, I vote for what I feel is right thing to do. Yeah.
I do, sometimes I might.
Good house, Chris.
Most of the time I don't. I can't see no point in, uh, hiring a man that we hired before and he didn't do a half, half job, so I'm not, I can't see.
Look what you give Adam Redmond.
What?
There's many times out there that he didn't do a very good job, and there's a lot of times that he didn't get every little area, you know?
He's one of the few people you never complained about when he came in here, so I didn't even.
I never complained about anybody.
You did too, everybody else except for Adam, that we had. Every time, except for Adam.
Well. Everybody was there to say in change.
Do we have another motion? I, I make a motion where you accept Alex Bailey's bid.
What do you want to accept Alex for?
Huh?
Why, why are you so hung up on Alex?
I'm not hung up on Alex, I'm hung up on the person that I think would do the job.
Every time, every time, your in-council goes to Alex Bailey.
Well, I just sit here, this is my first time in here.
It is based on Alex Bailey.
What do you have against Alex Bailey so bad?
I don't have one.
Well, evidently you do, evidently you do.
No, I don't. Firstly, I don't have nothing against them.
Got a motion made.
Point of order.
Point of order.
You can't discuss, discuss city employees and open gas, if you would like to do it, in your executive session.
Okay. Let's keep the comments about city employees, huh? What do you say, Donald?
I'll just, thank you.
Out loud.
Out loud.
Okay. Got a motion made to accept Alex Bailey's bid.
Same.
Got a motion made and seconded, any other further discussion?
No, but the same thing, you know, I had that.
All those in favor of accepting Alex Bailey's bid? By show of hands. You hear that, Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Okay. When can you start?
It's looking.
It's grown up.
Oh, no.
All right, okay, so. I have to apologize to this body. I had another conversation with R. Dot about the bridge and the bridge design. Um, one thing that I overlooked is when we talked about this bridge last month, this is. It wasn't clear to me that the bridge on the bottom will not have a face on the inside, the driving, it'll just look like concrete. Okay? Um, it'll just look like a concrete bridge. Um, I spoke to, I spoke to. R. Dot regarding that, let me see that, that design, um. I'm missing my letter, sorry. What he had said is that this, this mortar on this bridge, okay, they're not changing the mortar size, okay? They're actually about the same, so. With the mortar size being the same, and. The design not looking like a, it looks like a, 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 just a concrete structure on the inside while you're driving. Do we want to revisit that and make it look like, um, a decorative piece?
With all due respect, if you're driving, you shouldn't be looking at the damn bridge.
Walkers, people that walk. So anyways, people that walk.
And it's gonna be getting more chemicals and stuff on it from the stuff, so I'd say just.
But it's got sidewalk on each side.
Leave it like that, you know, because it's gonna wear out quicker than the outside, so, what's the?
But it's their bridge to maintain.
Yeah.
So, we know good well that the state doesn't maintain, does, and it's like maintain functionality, and that's pretty much it. Is this something, is this something that we need something on, or we've already made our decision?
We've made the decision, but I wanted to let you know that on the inside of this bottom bridge, it looks like.
A bridge.
Just a bridge, just a bridge. The other one has a little more decorative aspect, that brown pillar that you see here is wood grain, okay? So it looks like wood, but it's actually concrete, and it has a little more aesthetics to the town, so. The other one is just a concrete port, so. I know what we told them, and, and they're waiting till we have a meeting tonight, and. And I, I told them, I said, with that, and, cause this is the way they wanna go, this is their recommendation for historic towns. This is. The upper. So.
What do y'all want?
You know, I know whenever you're driving, yeah, you wouldn't look, but you know, there's little things on bridges that you remember, and then that, you remember those towns. And if it was aesthetically pleasing, you'd be like, well, isn't that just a cute little town, that was just really a pretty little bridge, and if they, there's gonna be places for walkers, you said?
Yep.
Yeah.
The other thing, if I could add too, I know the discussion last time, it was really pretty close discussion on the, um, the grout lines or things like that. I know that's one thing when I first looked at it, but now knowing that, I mean. I think, I think the beauty, the aesthetics, exactly like Jackie said, would be in that style, and I think there was a lot more. It was pretty cut and dry, but, or pretty even, not cut and dry, but pretty even on the discussion last time that I remember. So.
Okay. Anybody else? And like I said, it, it's, um. The grout lines are the same, it just looks different because the brown, it all blends, it's the same color, so anyways, but. I'd like to just, I could tell them to do whatever and just make the decision, but I'd like to bring it for y'all, so. Cause they need to move forward.
I mean, I, I like the idea of having a little bit of something going on on the bridge, and you have a nice little town, so.
Character, yeah.
Nice little, resin character might be nice, I mean, I'm open to switching.
Wonder how much, how long would that paint on that to die and that will hold up compared to the, I mean, I don't.
It's all the same.
Is it?
Same paint.
It ain't gonna, well, but this is just one color.
Yep.
No, it'll be the inside of this.
Did they say anything about that, or? Their maintenance could maintain.
This is the inside of the bridge.
Just looking hideous.
I'm sure if they recommend that for historic towns, that that will be a hidden thing that they upkeep.
May I see?
I'm gonna buy it to breathe, and I'll go with what you know.
It's whatever Jackie wants, okay, remember that, whatever Jackie wants. Neither one of us.
And these going, is this top one gonna have the lights in it too?
The same one I wanted last, last month.
Is that, is there gonna have where the lights to go and stuff?
So, both of them, both of them will have the option.
That's what I thought you said, but I didn't do that. I wanna go with that other.
How many motion we made to change to the top bridge, uh, top bridge?
Got a motion made to change to the top bridge.
I'll take it.
A motion made and seconded, all those in favor? All those opposed? No vote, okay, passed. All right. Um, are there anybody from the public like to speak? Is there anybody, nobody signed up, okay? Okay. Council, do y'all have anything, y'all wanna bring up? Skirt replacement for the sewer plant, um, should happen in the next couple of weeks, Alex is in contact with the contractor to do that. And it's next couple of weeks, so. Spoke to AEDC.
There's no downtime, is there downtime right now?
Alex? Should be a day after.
Yeah, just like, come in and out, it'll be a day.
I thought that was.
Yeah, um, our water lines, the valves and hydrant grant should start around one June. Davis Construction had won that bid. Um. Most cities, if you go to any city and you want a water line set, or a sewer that hasn't had sewer or water. You're paying a tap fee. Um, I am not prepared to bring an ordinance to you tonight, um, but we are going to, I will present to you an ordinance on a set amount. Of what it should cost for. Me, for example, if I wanted to put sewer and water over at my lots, what that cost should be, okay, depending on line size and whatever. Um, it's on average about a thousand dollars, eleven.
Water answer, or water?
Water, just, that's strictly water. I received these numbers, um, from Alex, these are up to date numbers, um, waiting on some sewer before, um, before I write an ordinance. We'll do it all in one ordinance, so. I'm not sure I will have it for the next meeting, I don't, there's some other things coming up and we'll discuss, but I'm not sure I'll have it. It'll be soon, but that's coming. Um, Entergy. Council, have y'all reported, reported, um, light outages before?
No, I just fixed them.
It's rough.
So what I've done is I've pulled, um. Screenshots of an app, Entergy app, okay, there's the app, that's what it looks like right there. You can continue as guest, if you see on it, let me see that. So right here, it says continue as guest, you'll do that, click on that. Over on the next, that will bring you to a screen, it'll say report street light out, okay? And it'll tell you, there's a little blur right over here on the right-hand side, I didn't capture it, but there's a little spot where it'll, it'll pull up your location where you're standing. If you click that, it'll take you to this screen right here, okay, and it'll show you the street lights. You're gonna tap it, and then alls you have to do is put your name and what's wrong with it, okay? And then hit submit, and that's all you have to do. Help me help the city, okay, if you notice it. There's more of y'all than me, so if you notice it, go ahead and submit it. It, it won't hurt to submit it more than once, okay?
There's a problem with that.
What's the problem?
Our light locations in this city don't match up with Entergy's map.
Okay.
So in order for you to actually do a light, you need a physical description and go by that, you can't do the little, that's what you're doing GPS for the track then. Oh, most of our lights, you can't do that.
Okay, what's the alternative? I was asking, Mike, thank you.
Uh, you'd have to go into, to lighting, lighting and, or do a fiscal call and give them a, give them a, do a fiscal call and give them a address or description.
Okay.
Of where, where they're at.
For the ones that this doesn't cover, that's the way to do it, okay? This, I, I've worked on this and it works, not all of them, you're right, but if it doesn't pick up, then that's the way to do it.
No, I have the streetlight maps, none of the streetlights that are on my street are on the system, they're showing the system.
Okay.
Of course, I don't know what that's gonna do to us, eventually, I don't know if they're, if they're showing these lights and not showing some other, whatever, or if we're not being billed for some of the lights. But there are lights, there are a lot of the lights that are out there that are not shown.
Right.
In fact, a lot of the lights that are, that are out there, you know, we, we hung off of tickets that were never streetlight numbered. Or ta, or tagged, so I don't, I don't know. You know, we, we, we ordered the lights as the city. For, you know, as the city, we ordered the lights, of course, but the one that I know of, or through the time that I was serviceman here for fourteen years, whatever. Fifteen years, and I'd go out and hang the lights, but there wouldn't be a, they'd never been tagged in.
So next time I visit a fellow.
So we're billing for them, as far as I know, but they're not tagged in.
Right.
Because until. Two years before I quit, I guess, or a year, well, probably a year before I quit, uh, you didn't do, you didn't do a GPS tag on, on anything that you did. So we, we installed the lights.
Right.
As far as I know, the cities, but they don't exist in the system. So I don't want to do it.
What's the, what's your view? Okay, so, are you not using Lighting@entry.com anymore?
I'm using their app.
Okay, so.
And they come out, so.
Um, there's a form, Mr. Davis has it, you email the form, it's got a, a place where you put the street name.
Right.
You have to put the three-digit vertical number, then you have to give a, uh, what the issue is with the light. They're wanting on the street, on the street name, they want the closest, if it's in the middle of the street.
Right.
Middle of the block instead of that apartment, they want some kind of description to help them locate it.
Okay.
My experience is they'll respond faster to this form than they will to the app for, or to just go out on and report a street light out.
Okay.
Because this form has multiples where you can fill it up, and if you do the app where you're reporting on one at a time, it, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike. It'll assign it as you record it, one at a time.
One at a time.
But if you do the form, it's assigned as a complete form, and you're gonna get more attention with multiples than you are a single. At nine times out of ten, you're never gonna have just one light out.
Imagine that.
There's two of them, let's bring them right in.
Have you recorded them?
No.
Why not?
The guy that got me the other day, when I tried to get one at church, took three weeks, and he finally, he said, follow me up here, take me up here and show me this light. And he said, now, while I'm sitting here, you call them and have them put this in here, where we'll have it, because he said, I've been looking for this light for, oh, how long?
Also, that inbox goes directly to someone's email in Harrison, it does not paint her out through the system.
Okay, so there's different options to report the lights, if you see a light out, report it. So. State aid, street paving, construction, the signs are up, the construction signs are up, um, they should start tomorrow with prepping. They should start tomorrow with prepping. Um, they should be here tomorrow. Spoke to Chris Harris to, uh, last week regarding our, our, um, rate study that has to be done by July. And there's a couple of people in front of us. Waiting for Cameron with Cersei and Associates to call me back um, for our water and sewer audit for twenty twenty-three. That's something that still needs to be done. Humane Society has requested the community center for July tenth for a, um, a clinic. A spain neuter clinic. It's something that you, this body has approved in the past, and they've done it before down there. So... Without any objection, I'll tell them to go ahead and they can use it on the tenth.
Sounds good.
I would like to go and do the back event July twenty-seventh too, while you're doing that.
That's, uh, back to school. Twenty-seven July.
Twenty-seven.
Um, lead and copper line inventory. Received an email from Ryan Mills with Corner and Shipwreck. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, it's just wanting a status, they're giving a status. They wanted to see if, we had to send them addresses in an Excel format, I've already done that. For all of our addresses for our users. Hundred and ninety systems of three eighty-four, have not. The next phase should start soon, which will involve providing us with a flyer of information related to the program or a short description of the program to print on our water bills. Um, this can be mailed to residents along with your normal water billing. A website is being established that will provide instructions to property owners for self-performing an inspection on their water line, which will include address, material the pipe is believed to be, and a picture. This data can be submitted online, and our technicians will review each one that comes in. So this is an initial inventory that's required by the state for everybody's water lines, so... I don't have any more information on that. I sent an email to the Homecoming Committee to see if there's anything that's needed from the city of Leslie. Haven't rece- it was sent today, I haven't received anything yet, so, to see if they need anything. Nuisance letter. We've addressed this, um, probably at exhaustion, so I'm moving forward with the letter. It's not ordinance-driven. This is a letter to say, hey, clean up your stuff, okay? That's what I'm gonna move forward with, so...
You already have that ordinance anyway.
I have, we have an ordinance on the books, but this is a letter to get them done. Firehouse grant, I should find out if we have received the firehouse grant. It's a fifty-fifty grant. Um, hopefully May twenty-first-ish, there's a conference, Arkansas Economic Development Conference in Hot Springs, May twenty-one through twenty-three. So I should find out about that, I hope by then. Firehouse, I just ordered a gutter company to come out and re- fix the gutters that are there, they are, I just cleaned them yesterday, they were bad. Anyways, they need to reinstall them, they're sagging and falling. AEDC Conference, Arkansas Economic Development Commission Conference, May twenty-one through twenty-three. Arkansas Municipal League Conference, June twelfth through the fourteenth. And just went to, um, UCA for a conference, Arkansas Community Development Society. The main takeaway is that, um, what we had discussed before is emergency preparedness. It was the main takeaway, I mean, they talked about incentivizing companies to move in, and that just doesn't apply to us. They talked about, um, they talked about the, um, eclipse, which is in the past, so... It was a good conference. Took an ad out in the paper for the volunteer fire department, if any of y'all wanna join the fire department?
I'd better.
You better not, alright. The Ozark Mission Project, which I had discussed last month, was a, a group um, coming into the area that would work on, um, porches or whatever. That deadline has passed, so one May, sorry. Welcome to Leslie signs, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but we've had the historic signs have been repainted on north and south side of, um, Leslie. That was donated by Matt.
Wil- Willston.
Willston, he painted them for a dona- he just donated, um, his time. And we installed them and they, they look nice. The welcome to Leslie signs, um, the ones that the American Legion VFW, um, have championed to put up new signs, and old rock ones, y'all remember? They're in production now to be made. We were rebuilding, yep?
The estimated timeline, they're hoping to get back to Tom, I believe, by Wednesday.
Okay.
I just talked to him today.
We're rebuilding, we rebuilt the rock structure down by Red River Cafe. As we were doing that, R. Doc came up and said, cease and desist. They said, you can no longer put a sign there. Their right of way is a hundred and fifty feet from the center of the road, which that sign has been on there for thirty years. Long time. Those rock structures, the rock steps going up the hill, it covers that too. So they got a hundred and fifty feet, so that's why Red River has got harder time putting signs up, because anyways, I'm visiting with, um, the engineers of R. Doc to see if we can get an exception to policy. Um, I don't know if it's gonna work. If not, we'll have to relocate that sign. The other ones, they checked the other north and south, or the north and the east one.
Is that a hundred and fifty feet on both sides of the road?
Um... I'll let you, there's their right of way. That, that map was nineteen sixty-something, I don't remember. But it shows the old stairs going up that mountain. But anyways, they told us to stop, but we, um, somebody, I, over the night, they finished the rock on, I don't know who did it. But it's finished, I don't know who did it. But anyways, so that's, if you go to Red River Cafe and you look up on the hill, you will see a pink flag, and that is where their marker is. And it's up on the hill a long ways, and it's like, yeah. So anyways, we may have to relocate that, um, that sign. Gary Passworth is, um, looking to pay for getting water over at his place. So I'm just letting y'all know, that's, it's coming, so... He's paying the board, so he's needs water. Ms. Adams, you, uh, signed up?
Yes, I wanted to thank you for the signs not allowing parking on, at the Methodist Church where we back out and run into cars.
Does it work?
Nope.
I want to thank you for me, but at least we got the signs, so we can call the sheriff.
Sheriff's office is correct.
Does it even help?
Uh, they, um, park above that sign you put where you come out of the driveway.
So I put two signs, so I need to put them all the way down through there?
Well, it, it stops right there, and it didn't go all the way up to the fellowship hall, but, hey, um, it's fine. They should have enough sense, not enough respect
Yep.
To see you got a driveway this way, not to park behind it, so you...
And the church's parked as marked too.
Yep, and they was in it, you couldn't even, we couldn't even get up further the other day, the other night. And there wasn't no, there wasn't no deputies available at the time, they was out on the call. So... But... It, it's working somewhat, but you've done a good job, appreciate it.
The council did it, by the way, so... Like I said, conference, I will be out of town, um, over Memorial Day, I'm going to a graduation in California. My nephew's graduate high school, so the next meeting will be June the third. Same place, same station. Any questions? Thank you all, this meeting is now adjourned. I will need a, a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
Motion made and seconded.